I call the Policy Resolution and Legislative Committee of the Board of Education of the Wausau School District to order. During this meeting, board members will in many cases be hearing information presented to them for the first time. Their responses will in many cases be extemporaneous and should not be considered either their final opinion on a matter nor should any opinion expressed by an individual board member during any meeting be considered the opinion of the board as a whole unless it is presented by the presiding officer as such. Second item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. So I seek a motion to approve the October 8, 2018 PRL minutes.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the legislative update. Wisconsin voters went to the polls last week in record numbers. For example, my district had a whopping 90 percent turnout. That's almost unheard of. Major issues of concern for Wisconsin voters included health care, road repair, and education. In the end, voters chose the state superintendent of public schools, Dr. Tony Evers, to serve as the next governor. He would be sworn in this January. The last eight years have seen billions cut from K-12 education as well as union protection for teachers eroded. Our state currently faces a teacher shortage and many colleges and universities have seen a sharp decline in the number of students choosing teaching as a career. By electing Tony Evers, the voters are sending a clear message that K-12 public education is a high priority for Wisconsinites. On another note, many school referendums were also on the ballot. The Milwaukee Journal Sentinel reported that voters approved 77 school referendums and rejected just five. This means voters agreed to raise their own property taxes by at least $1.3 billion to fund their local school districts. Heather Dubois Boranain, executive director of the nonprofit Wisconsin Education Network, a coalition of public school advocates, said it was a landslide for public education. I hope this is the beginning of a new era for K-12 public education funding and support for our schools. Next on the agenda are our policies and we start with, I guess we have some policies on here that have been there for our reference but no action requested on them. But they're on the agenda in case somebody needs to discuss something related to those policies. Is there anybody that needs to talk about anything related to policy 5705, 5707, 5708?
Well, one second.
Can I just pull up 5708 for a second here?
Since you've said, since you've said that and opened the door for this, there is a concern that was addressed to me and I met with a couple people last week about it and it's under this matter about student disruption.
Which policy, 5705?
5708 probably.
5708, yeah. The concern that was addressed to me was the, you know, we spend a lot of time on bullying, but there's things that are happening that aren't bullying. It's student disruption. It's almost bullying an entire classroom or teachers. So the concern that was addressed to me was that we don't really have policies that address this strongly. And I'm raising it now because these are listed here for, this is presumably where it would go within this material here.
So we've dealt with the harassment, discrimination stuff, but it sounds like what you're saying is we're ready to take a look or you're ready to take a look and maybe we should all think about, I mean, we have them listed here so we can discuss them. They're on the agenda. But it's maybe time to take a closer look at what's actually in those policies. I think we had them there because they related to the harassment, discrimination policy. And they're still there.
I raised a similar issue on 5708 to the last meeting or the one before because it talks about the removal of students from class and, you know, we really need to address that and where are they removed to and do we actually have opportunities so that teachers can, you know, we've got the policy that says they can remove students from class, but in fact, do we actually have that ability all the time? Because I don't, I don't know that they always have that ability. I think they technically have the ability, but if it's going to cause a major disruption of somebody else's class over the principal's day or to whatever else, it's sort of like a barrier to them actually acting on it.
I remember we discussed that in context with those other ones from 5705 and 5707 back when, what's, Lindell, when he was here and the question was to he and to the interim superintendent at the time, "Do you have what you need from the board to act on those policies?" And the answer that we got, that every time it was asked, was unequivocally, "Yes, we have what we need from you." But then to your question, Lance, it sounded like there was almost this subculture within some of the schools where, yeah, they had those tools, but there just wasn't a reasonable means to execute. So maybe that's where the issue lies now. Keith, I know you've had a lot of interaction with this, but...
And we've talked about expanding some of the options that we have for students that aren't succeeding in the traditional classroom, so it's all sort of tied together. I don't know what our best plan is for bringing that forward, but...
Well, I've requested that we have a meeting just on that issue to Keith and to Jeff and Beth because the incidents that are happening now are just, they need really immediate attention.
Right, because we've talked about expanding the peer program. We've talked about it, like, just touched on it, but we've never had a meeting where we just, like, that was, that was the agenda.
And these have been here for our reference, but maybe now it's time to dig a little deeper and just look at them? Could that be something?
What is it that you have in mind? I certainly know about, you know, the behavior concerns. And I would agree. I think the policy does give us the tools, Angela, as you disagree, but I think that the policy does give us the tools or the permission, right, to use the tools. I think at this point, you know, we are trying to create more tools. You know, I've shared with you a couple of times, you know, we're looking for additional spaces, you know? So I think that's ongoing work. If the board is interested at some point in the near future about having a conversation about, you know, these efforts, we could do that, but I don't think it's necessarily a policy question. Maybe some policy questions would come up if we had that conversation.
Yeah, I think it's related to the policy because the policy says that a student that's disrupting the education of the other students in class can be removed from class by the teacher, but, you know, do we have...
What's the good option?
Do we have enough options that actually make that? Because teachers aren't going to just remove the student if it's going to be bad for that student, if it's going to be bad for the principal, it's going to be bad for whoever. You know, what options do we have in place that actually allows teachers to use that policy?
And I think our policy is butting up with what I think is an overinterpretation of least restrictive environment.
Let me give you an example from my school. We remove students from class if they're disrupting. And we have a room in our school called the processing room and it's staffed all day long and that's where kids go. They sometimes go to the office, but most of the time they can be handled in this processing room, which gives them a chance to de-escalate and talk to persons that's in there.
Do you see, I guess, has the advantage of having, not having neighborhood schools, so they have less...
Well, I'm talking about at the middle school level.
Oh, okay.
And we do have a number of those rooms at the middle school and high school level. It's a little more difficult at elementary where, you know, you run into less...
Is it the room that's difficult or the staffing as far as duties and having somebody in there that's difficult?
Yeah, I would say both.
If I may, so I had kind of two separate interactions, some teachers, some parents. And some of the concerns I heard from parents were when a class is evacuated and parents aren't notified, you know, we don't have a policy on that. And when we have elementary students that are evacuated from a classroom because of a disruptive student that's being violent, what does that do to them? Or are we desensitizing the students, saying that this is okay and we're just going to walk back in? But then some of the other concerns I heard are the lack of space, the lack of room, our students are going down, you know, taking up a principal's time and elementary principal's time, or maybe that principal's not in the building, so now they're sitting with a secretary. And just that lack of space and lack of staffing to man that space. But there were a lot of concerns that were addressed, so if we could have, you know, like, a meeting on that, I think that would be really a good starting point.
I think that makes sense to me because in a sense, when there's that kind of disruption, it's traumatizing to the kids that are being removed. And I do think that's an issue that we really need to address.
And what was reinforced to me was, and it's pretty obvious, but students need to feel safe to learn.
The other thing we need to keep in mind is that special education students have IEPs and protocols for dealing with things and we have to follow the laws.
Yeah, and I don't think there's any dispute in that, but what, to me, the fundamental issue that I've seen frankly in the last six years is you have a small group of students who, for whatever reason, IEP or no IEP, completely, completely derail the learning environment for the larger group.
But what I'm hearing from administration is it's not really related to the policy. It's, that's administrative rules or procedures within a building that, you know...
Sure.
...they would look at and...
Yeah, I don't know if it's necessarily policy language, but it's related to the policy in the sense that if the policy can't be carried out because there are insufficient resources, insufficient room, then, you know, I'd like to have a discussion about that so that we can talk about whether there's something we can do to try to improve that.
I wonder, you know, clearly I think we've all got, you know, similar concerns about, you know, student misbehavior and its impact on education and I think I've shared with you, that's, that's going to be one significant area that's part of the strategic plan. I was going to talk to Jeffrey about scheduling a board workshop around the development of the strategic plan, which this conversation about student behavior would be a component. Would you like to have the whole strategic plan conversation and see where that student component, that student behavior component fits in? Or would you rather just have a separate, it's kind of out of context is my only concern, you know, because there's, there's a lot of other factors that could, you know, building pieces, you know, I mean, literally building spaces, you know, professional learning, the whole piece kind of goes into...
I would be comfortable hearing it initially as part of that strategic plan because of the connections to everything else, but...
And then if we need more, we can always schedule a deeper...
Right, right.
Okay. I'll get on that.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
But the message we want to send as a board probably is that we want to support our administrators and our teachers in schools to help kids learn and have a safe environment. That's what I'm hearing from everybody here.
Yeah, we can't just have the policy. We have to make it so that they can actually carry out the policy.
So if that means extra staff or, that might be something we have to consider, so...
But I don't think we can spend all year waiting to solve the problem. This is something that is very important and we've been talking about it for the last couple of years. And I don't want to spend all year talking about, well, we could do this, or we could do this, or we could do this, and we end up doing nothing. So I agree with everybody.
We've talked for years.
Yes.
Although we did turn down the number of requested school social workers. So it's not that things haven't been brought to us. I mean, we approved three instead of six or something. I can't remember what the numbers were, but I know we didn't approve what was actually brought forward to us, so...
I'm not sure that that's, would solve the problem, that we need immediate, in the building constantly someone there and a plan and...
It wouldn't solve the problem, but certainly not having a social worker in the building is part of the problem.
I think we tried to make sure that we had a social worker or a guidance counselor at the sixth most at-risk schools every day. And that's a lot more than happens at the other seven that don't have that.
Well, you're heard. And it looks like we're going to move forward on that, so I think everybody's got the message that this is like an urgent concern of ours and we want to support everyone. All right, so next on the list would be policy 5120, K-12 Assignment of Students to Schools. An action is requested on this one.
I brought this board last month just to get a little more guidance and clarity on what we would allow as an in-district transfer. And we broke it down by elementary and secondary level. I didn't change anything on number one or number two. Number three would be per the IEP team and really in elementary, that would be the only differentiation with programs, would be an IEP placement. Secondary level would be the IEP team decision or when a comparable academic program offering is not available at the current school of attendance. And then the last statement we put in there was, "Any other special considerations? Please contact the Director of Pupil Services."
I think that last sentence, at least for me, addresses the concern we had that letting parents know that they could contact you.
I had submitted to Cassie my suggested revisions. Nothing was really substantive. I apologize that it didn't make it into board book. And then I emailed Jeff and I didn't realize he was sick. So I had looked over these suggested revisions and just from a matter of organization, like I said, there's nothing here as substantive changes. I do have questions that are substantive, however, but I just, I made some changes for clarity and to organize the order in which it's presented. I can go through all of them or if you need time to look through it...
That's the printed one that's at our...
Yeah, there's a clean version with just my comments and then there's the track changes version. And I printed these out because last time when I tried uploading them, the comments didn't come through.
And that's why I sent it in PDF.
And then I can upload it after the meeting.
So what I'm wondering now is, are these changes small enough, and I haven't had the chance to really look them over, that we could approve the policy and then go back and make minor changes?
I do have a few questions, though, that are substantive.
Okay.
So maybe while everybody's looking, I could just address them. And just as a side note, the reason I moved the in-district transfer form to the end is because, just, it might seem picky to you, it's not picky to me, but things like, except as noted below. And then there was a bunch of language and then you actually get to the part that was noted below. It seems like that should be distinguished and moved. So it's things like that for clarity. I did remove the contact information because it's kind of strange to have that in a policy. I think to have the actual title, Director of Pupil Services, or his or her designee would be more appropriate because the form would presumably have the contact information. Some questions that I have are, would be, one, is the form available to be hyperlinked from the website? Does it have to be that the parent or guardian gets it from the principal or from Longfellow? Or can they just click on the website even right here on the policy where it says in-district transfer form and they can get the form that way?
It doesn't say how they're getting it.
It does in the policy, though. It says forms are available, because I didn't change that actual language, I just left that, but it just, it says either principal or Longfellow. And I'm just thinking about making things a little bit easier, accessible for our parents and guardians.
Would the reason for that be that then you know who's going to be maybe turning in the form?
You're going to know when you have to get all the signatures. I mean, there's a lot of people that have to sign off even more at the secondary level. I think if we're thinking about maybe people that can't get to school, maybe they don't want to interact at the school, maybe they can't get to Longfellow during business hours, but they can get online when they're not working in the middle of the night. Something, I mean, if we can make things more accessible to our parents and guardians, that it seems like a pretty easy fix.
Yeah, I can't figure out why we wouldn't want to.
Well, it's, it's easier for the principal and for Longfellow who don't have to hand up the form.
Right, that's one less thing.
More time to deal with behavior issues.
The next question I have was, there's a couple of things that are removed from the current policy and I'm just wondering why. Not really arguing one way or another, but for instance, with this transfer form, in the current policy, it says that letters and/or recommendations from outside agencies such as physicians, therapists, and clergy should be included along with the transfer request. That's been omitted from the policy that were presented and I'm just curious why. It seems like maybe if there's something that can provide a fuller picture to a decision maker.
I tried looking for that because I saw your comment and the one that's currently on our website, I couldn't find that statement in there.
It's in three, the second paragraph after that parenthetical, elementary-level forms discussing that.
It's in the form, Trish, or in the policy itself?
It's actually in the policy, in the current policy available online. And I just didn't know why that was omitted.
I see it was under three?
Yeah, the second paragraph.
I only see a single paragraph on three.
Are you looking at the revision that Angie provided?
I'm looking at the one off the website.
Hmm, because I just printed this off from there today, too.
And I looked that over multiple times, the one online, and I can't find it on there.
Well, I don't, I magically got this somehow done.
Magic.
I don't know, I just, I pulled this off the site today myself or maybe I Googled 5120.
Language sounds reasonable, like you're saying you're trying to flesh out your request.
I mean, I can leave this for either of you. Maybe I just Googled Wausau School District policy 5120 and some old policy was there. I don't know. I have this here, though.
What's the last date?
The last date on it is 2009, so maybe, oh, yeah, 2017. So this was removed in 2017. I'm not sure why. My fellow board members might remember why. Okay, so anyway, that was my question about that. I think I had one other question. No, I guess that's all my comments for now. They're pretty clear in here.
Trish, if you'll, you had written a question about why isn't this option listed for elementary level?
Oh, yeah, thank you. It's not, well, what I had taken from Angie's version is just removing that third line because it was elementary, secondary, and then this kind of other random thing which would presumably apply to either. But, yeah, the question was when a comparable academic program offering is not available at the current school of attendance. That's an option for the secondary level, but it's not an option for transfer or potential transfer at the elementary level.
Because there's no, I mean, all of our elementary schools have the exact same programming. The only time it would ever be considered where there would be different programming would be our care program, which is our autistic program, or our medically fragile program. In both of those cases, it would be an IEP team decision to move that child.
So is there enough here that we need to bring this back next month?
Well, I'm comfortable with the changes that are proposed here. But I also don't know that it's an emergency, so if people would like to see it, you know, in board book next month, I think that's fine. So I'd be comfortable with either one.
I would prefer to hold off just so everybody does get a chance to look at it a little bit more detailed.
I guess, I, you know, I didn't see any harm in that. There's no emergency between now and next month for us to look at it again.
And the only other thing, I don't know if it's possible to give examples of unusual educational reasons under conditions, letter D, because we talked about this last time, what does that mean? But it would be helpful to somebody reviewing the policy wondering, oh, is this, will my situation or my child's situation potentially qualify if there were some examples that were provided?
Do you want, I wonder if, we'd have to be careful with it just to...
Include but not limited to language.
Yeah, not only include but not limited to, but also make it clear that, that won't always guarantee that you have...
Yeah, I worry lots of confusion.
That would be my worry. And you have to somehow, you know, the, the level of concern for what the reason is for the transfer also, you know, or what has to be shown to qualify for a transfer changes, it's not always the same, which sounds really unfair until you bring in the class size capacity issue and then you see it's not unfair. Just sometimes if somebody's asking to transfer into a class that's really small, you don't have to show much. That's actually pretty, that's actually pretty helpful.
Yeah, I don't mind if that sentence comes out, but I just...
Examples typically would not be, wouldn't necessarily have to be part of a policy because they could, the examples could change very easily where...
Right. I guess I'm not in favor of putting examples. You know if there's an unusual reason.
Well, like you said, it could state include but are not limited to, to leave it open, but I also just said I'm fine with removing it.
Maybe, Angie, maybe you can think about that, too, and let us know what your thoughts are next month on that sentence, whether it would be good to, you know, if we have some examples that you'd be pretty comfortable with or if you'd be worried that, well, sometimes that example works and sometimes it doesn't.
I can talk with Tom and him and...
Yeah, so I mean, if there's an example that basically always works when there's capacity, that would be a good one to use. But if there isn't one like that, then I'd be a little worried about it.
Yeah.
I'll look into that.
So we'll go one more month on that. We'll get it perfect. So next on the agenda is policy 1300, Public Participation in Board Meetings. An action is requested on that.
Right, yep. I had brought this one and the board had made some requests to change and I believe they are, they were made, some of those questions on...
The question I had...
The last sentence under the policy 1300, setting where it says board members may respond to these comments, but will do so at the time that the item is discussed in accordance with the agenda.
So that's on the form.
Yeah, on the signup sheet. The signup was add. I was trying to follow...
Right.
It's right after the policy.
It's just, it's page one. I'm just trying to connect that so we can respond during the discussion of that item on the agenda that evening.
Right, yes.
Okay. So it has to be because this one is for items on, then we can talk to it at that point.
Yeah, and then there's...
Right, because that's, that item happens early in the agenda before we discuss everything else happening. So if they bring it forward, if it's on the agenda, we can talk about it later on.
Because the one that's not on the agenda is...
Is at the end.
Yeah, all right. Okay, thank you.
Question I had, I like, like the two changes to the signup forms. On the policy itself, it says, "Due to public notice requirements, set by law, board members are unable to discuss issues presented during audience participation." Should we also distinguish in the policy like we have in the signup forms that, to explain that we actually can discuss it if it's a noticed topic and we can't if it's not?
Sure, let's see, non-agendized or steal this language?
Just think we ought to distinguish, otherwise the policy gives the impression that even on the noticed agenda items, we can't discuss it.
Would that be a small change that we could still...
Small change, if the board's comfortable.
I am. Any other comments or...
No, that's fine with me.
All right.
Yeah, because we'd see, I mean, that small change can be made and we're going to see it again in writing before we actually vote on it at the end of the meeting, so...
Then I would seek a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education the approval of policy 1300, Public Participation in Board Meetings as presented. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the next item on the agenda is Contribution Agreement for School Resource Officer Services. And we're taking a look at this again because we asked for some changes, I think, in length of time and I'm not sure what else, but...
We brought it back to the city and then their attorneys did it and then they wanted, they wanted to clarify a couple of things. So anything in red is just what they clarified. And really, it's not, it's not any big changes, but they just wanted it a little more specific. So they would like a call to contribution agreement instead of a memorandum of understanding. Down on 3.2, they did January through May and September through December to make nine months of the school year. Then they outlined what the fringe benefits would be in parentheses on 3.2. Then they outlined what the fringe benefits would be in parentheses on 3.2. And on the following page, they just, they outlined when the invoice would be, would come in. So the invoice for 2018 class would be submitted in 2019.
So one of the sticking, sticking points, I think, was that paying of overtime for officers to be at events? Now, I've seen them at graduations, but are there a lot of other events that they go to? Like, are they at the school dances? Are they at the sporting events?
Yeah, we tried to minimize that this year compared to last year. But, yes, those, those are incredibly important for them to be at, just for extra eyes, extra people there. But they did, the, the secondary schools really cut back from what they had them doing last year. And they do contact me and ask if, you know, like this past weekend, West had an extra dance. So they'll, they'll ask me and then I'll ask Nate Siler if that's okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about the changes to that policy by Rossa PD?
And this is our only agreement that we have with them?
I believe so.
So we really don't have a memorandum of understanding about how they behave in our schools?
I think that they're under the same policies as other employees of the school district. Would the SROs be under the handbook policies because they're employee of the school district? Or no?
Yeah, we would expect them to comply.
So it'd be like any other staff person?
But we still can't require them to get training so that they can do better in our schools. Because they get no training to deal with juveniles and children in there.
I think they get the same training that every staff person would get. They're at the faculty meetings and, I mean, when, when staff get training on specific issues, they deal with the crisis plan and they, they would get whatever staff development other people in the school would get.
Is that, actually, I'm not sure if that's...
Yeah, our safety training, so like our Alice training they did. As far as like ESAs and that type of thing, they are not there.
Right.
And they don't get training in special needs, how to treat them different than you would treat other people? I just, I just think we should have more say in what they get training in.
If you don't mind my asking, because I'm not familiar, so let's say we, we would like our SROs to attend to training. Can we make the request? Is it usually, you know, agreeable? Do you have any experience with that?
I do not, I could ask, though. I mean, that would be easy answers to get.
I mean, the, the response the last time that Jane brought it up, when Jeff Lindell was in your position, was they've been willing to do anything that we've asked them to do, so we don't need to put it in the policy. Whether you agree with that or not, that's, I mean, you said it's just never been a problem. If we've asked them to do something, they've done it. Because if they don't do it, then we don't have to agree with this anymore.
Well, and if there were examples, Jane, that you have, maybe you could share with Angie that she could take back to them and say, hey, here's a handful of situations that I think they could have done differently or better, and here's some training that may be appropriate. I, I don't know if they are out there now or recently, but you may not heard.
I don't know, I just know there's an SRO organization and they do training for them. And I don't know if our convention in January has training for officers or not, but I know there is training out there specifically directed towards them. But there's also training on bullying and, and the cause, and to understand it more fully, it's just not, you know, on such a surface level.
What they do get when they're working in a school, and I'll just speak from personal experience, because we have a full-time SRO in our building, is they're there to make relationships with kids and with teachers. And so when they're working with teachers, they get to know kids from the teacher's perspective. I think there's a ton of conversations that go on about kids when SROs are assisting. So it may not be, you know, a, attending a workshop thing, but it may be more specific to a specific child and a special ed teacher sharing, okay, these are the de-escalation techniques that work with this kid I found. And I think they pick up on that stuff and, I mean, they're there to support the teachers and the students. I don't think they're there to do something different.
Do we know that they don't get some type of training relative to, I'm thinking, if you're in, if you're a detective, I mean, you may go to a homicide training, or you may go to a, you know, drug-type training if that's your area's specialty. Maybe it would be good to know what they, you know, not even before they come, but also ongoing. They may be doing stuff that we're just not aware of.
And they've done things, I mean, everything that we do, you know, they, they're right on board with. Like we did some threat assessment training and they're right there learning with us. So I'm hesitant they would be on board with whatever we would do. And, you know, Beth is right, they're, the majority of the time they're in our buildings, they're building relationships with students, just the same as the rest of the staff in the building.
Frankly, I've seen them do things recently, I'm thinking of those, those dogs now that they have in the high schools. I don't believe that was a request of ours. I think they, they took the initiative to do that.
That's a great example.
Well, I've seen great improvement leaps and bounds compared to when it first started. I mean, the officers we have now are head and shoulders above the first ones we had.
I guess, note that we'd love to know what kind of training they have.
Yes.
I know they did a presentation to us last year, and maybe if they do another presentation, that would be something that some board members are really curious about, you know, how, how did they get to be an SRO? What kinds of trainings do they do that help them in their job?
That presentation last year I thought was excellent. And I, I've referred to it a number of times in talking with parents and others, it was just, it was an excellent presentation. So I would, I would agree with that.
I'll find out from Cassie if we have any spotlights in education left this year.
Thank June.
Yeah, thank June.
But if not, even just replying back to us, just to let us know what training you found out would be helpful.
Or giving them the opportunity to say, oh, now that you opened the door, what we'd really like to know is this, and I'm sure we can make it happen. Okay, so I would seek a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education the approval of recommended changes to the Contribution Agreement for School Resource Officer Services.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, motion carries. And lastly, I would seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.